Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor Protim Rupertis.
Still here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Alderman Madre.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Mayor, you do have a forum.
Thank you, Mayor. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am going to take this flag, the allegiance of the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, everyone. We have a special presentation. Mr. Doogie couldn't make it today, Hank. Our county treasurer, Betty, sent in some replacements. Spencer Lewis and Constable Justin West. You would like to address?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm B Team. I'm the constable in Leap City, in Friendswood area. Spencer's the... What's your title?
Communications Director.
Communications Director for the county. So, just a quick recap. I know Hank's probably talked to most of you. His goal this year in his election was to eliminate the county treasurer's position. He ran in the primary election and won eighty percent of the vote roughly to do that. He's foregone his salary, so he's actually fallen off daily. He does not receive a salary. He's doing the job now. And most of the questions are about who's going to maintain the duties of the office. Well, those duties are being done by a smaller crew because some of the folks in the office have already retired. So, he's actually been doing the work. It's going to be absorbed by the treasurer's or the udder's office and professional services budget office. You're going to absorb the other duties. Some of what's done is outsourcable for a fraction of the cost of what it costs to pay someone to do the job. So, all that's being taken into account. They have a plan in place. And then there have been resolutions from the county, Hitchcock, LaMarcus, we're going to... There's tonight, several other cities. I believe Leap City's also filed the resolution already. So, all the communities in Gauz County have been coming together to support it. Now, the goal is a constitutional amendment that will come on the ballot in November. So, that's where he's working. Mays Milton is filing a bill in the Senate. Dr. Gray Bond is filing a bill in the House to get it onto the ballot for this year. So, a lot of effort's been put in place. I know Hank's been in Austin five, six times this year already. So, any questions you have, we're happy to answer them.
I would like to add also, I think you may have missed that... One moment. Eliminating the treasurer's office will save the county, the taxpayers roughly half a million dollars a year, which is incredible. And since there's other counties in Texas that have gotten rid of their treasurer's office, and since then, no county has ever reinstated their treasurer's office after getting rid of it.
We'll have some discussion when we get to item... Item in the new business.
Okay. Very good. Thank y'all. We'll be there for questions.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all. Item number four. We had a public hearing at 5:30, and we will be discussing that in the new business. And now it's time for the citizens' request to speak before council. Ms. Caitlin Wolford is up first.
How are y'all doing today? So, thanks for getting this on the agenda. So, can we talk about it? So, one of the things that I think would be really important that would help our community quite a bit is if we would look at putting no parking signs along Bob Smith. The park... No parking signs would begin at the end of the sanctuary, which is Pelican Road, to the back of Bob Smith. Bob Smith currently has two no parking signs at the very end of it already. So, it would be a continuation of that. Jolly Roger has no parking signs all the way down from the curve to the back of the roadway. By placing the parking signs in this location, it would not prevent anyone from stopping and watching the sunsets or having mowing crews come in and mow. The goal would be to prevent people who are coming into our subdivision, who are not property owners, who are parking along the roadway, they're driving over the plants, they're leaving trash, they're cutting underneath the fence, and they're going into the marsh to do weed fishing. That's what the majority of them are doing. But what we're observing, since we live up there off Bob Smith, is that they're trampling down the marsh grass, they're leaving trash and debris, and it's something that me as citizens need to be concerned about. And I joined the JBIC Homeowners Association to help improve the community and get involved. And one of the things we did was take down the old barbed wire and T-posts so we could mow along there. And one of the things that we would like to propose is to adopt a roadway within the city. And that way, people can be active about cleaning and keeping things nice along the roads. If we put up no parking signs, then we can clean along the fence line. We can have people adopt that. It would give us the ability to pick up the trash because right now, as y'all are aware, along Bob Smith, in particular because of the debris, we get a considerable amount of trash that blows up into the debris, into the weeds, and it's hard to get in there and clean it out because you've got broken limbs and debris in there and the rattlesnakes in the summer. So, if we could implement the no parking along this way, it would not limit any... It would be past the narrow streets, which are Kingston Way, Magna Way. And so, those people could continue to park along Bob Smith if they needed to, to accommodate their homes. It would be simply to protect our marshlands and prevent people from staying there late at night. We give our police the opportunity to go out there and give warnings, hopefully first, and then second tickets for people that were violators. We could keep it cleaner. We could make it easier for mowing. We'd let people adopt the roadways, keep the trash down, and really take care of our marsh. So, that was my proposal for the no parking on that area. So, do you have any questions for me?
I can't do questions yet.
Oh.
We'll discuss.
Okay. Sorry, I thought y'all could ask me questions too. So, thank y'all.
Next one is Ms. Ginger Jones.
One, I want to remind everybody to come out in April because we don't have church again. But what I want to ask about is the water increases. I would like to know what other communities around here, because I've been looking at some of them, and theirs is really either lower or at the same that we are now. And I'd like to see if there's a reason why we're thinking we'll have to increase again because we just had an increase where they... Was it the minor amount that you pay? Whether you use it or not, that went up some. So, that's why I was wondering about that. Thank you.
We'll be discussing more of that during the new business. Next person will be Ms. Andrea Sperry. Is she on the phone?
Yes. Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, how come I can't hear the meeting in general? I should be able to... Because I thought when I called in this number, I could hear everything.
I don't have an instrument.
Okay, and am I speaking to city council?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I... This is Andrea Sperry, 16617 Jamaica Beach Road. A couple things. One, I don't know why I cannot hear the entire meeting because I thought when I called in that I should be able to remotely hear the meeting. So, I'm hoping someone can address this future, moving forward, that I don't just get put on hold until it's my turn to speak, but that I am allowed to hear the goings on of the council meeting as if I was there because in the past, that's what I've been able to do. That aside, I would like to thank you guys for the opportunity to address city council. And I specifically want to thank two of the directors. I would like to specifically thank the police chief for putting actual numbers and important actions up in his comments and to give us information about crime rates, arrests, things like that in Jamaica Beach. I think as a resident here, that's a really important piece of information for me to have, and I truly appreciate his openness in giving us that information. Secondly, I'd like to thank the director of operations, Robert, for his report. I had the opportunity to actually meet Robert last week. And I want to thank you personally for taking care of removing the sand from Buccaneer and the restriking of Buccaneer. It's so much better. And I know you address this in your report. I have a couple of concerns about that. And one is, will the new side asphalt areas be marked on the road with people logos so that they're noted as pedestrian lanes and not golf cart lanes or passing lanes? And secondly, I would like to request that the city install stop, a four-way stop, at Buccaneer and Jamaica Beach Road. Golf carts and other vehicles speed through the light at thirty oh five on their way to the beach. And by the time they hit Jamaica Beach Road, they're going fairly fast. And occasionally, when they hit the beach, because of the currents and the erosion on the beach, there's water and they can't actually drive straight through. Also, there with the pedestrian lanes, I'm concerned with the speeding vehicles. So, I'm hoping that city council can address the speeding on that whole two-block area of Buccaneer. And I think that can be resolved by simply installing a four-way stop at that location, protecting both pedestrians, golf cart, and vehicle safety. Again, I would like to thank the two directors for giving us a lot of information in their reports. And I appreciate the ability to speak to city council. And I would hope from this point forward that I would be able to hear the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much.
The reports... Reports from directors of police and fire, actually, of the directors of police were in the packets. Does anyone have any questions for that? Just council. Just a little sign up. This is a workshop is where we get y'all, more of the crowd involved. That is the workshop-style meetings. This is a business meeting. So, this is where we will be just discussing this amongst ourselves by council. That's the way this is meeting was called for. A regular meeting or what they call a business meeting, also known as a business meeting. But the workshops is which we also have is where we look for discussion from the citizens. So, that being said, is there any...
Mayor, may I make one comment?
Sure.
The packets are available on the city website. They are posted up the Friday before the business meeting. So, all that info... All the information we're looking at is available on the city website. And it'll remain up there so we can go back and look at it.
And it will be done that way from now on so we can help out there. With that being said, we'll move on to item number seven, which is comments, reports from members of council. Woody, do you have anything?
No, I hope everyone had a nice... Had a good holiday and hope it doesn't rain too much tomorrow.
Alderman Rupertis?
Yes, sir. I'm going to skip my report. The mayor has advised me that next month, we're going to give a detailed report as to the city standings, projects that were completed, and projects that are in the works. Tonight's going to be a very long meeting, so I'm going to save my long comments for that one. One of my main issues was the water supply, but we'll be covering that later on in the agenda. I was asked by the police department, however, they really need your help. I know it's great to have the chief's phone number and reach out to call the chief or the lieutenant or the officer on duty, but it's causing a problem. If you have a non-emergency, if you're not calling 911, they urge you to call dispatch, which is 409-737-1800. The reason for this is they keep reporting. So, say you're complaining about your neighbor's noise. If you call the chief, he goes out there and checks on it. There's no report. If they want to go follow up, it's usually on the second call that they can... I want to get my terminology right. First contact is usually a warning. The second contact will be elevated to the next level, including citations. All right? So, please, once again, call, go through dispatch so it can be documented. They can record it, and we can have stats for all our different types of calls. Once again, non-emergency dispatch, 409-737-1800. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Paul Ruach?
It's been a while, huh? Huge thank you to all the volunteers at the park for the job y'all did. That was, again, fantastic things. And Mr. Mayor, just a comment of mine. I would like us to go to a semi-monthly meeting rhythm like we used to have, but it seems like tonight is exactly the reason why I want to do that. We got a bunch of items for discussion, and we should be dividing that discussion and voting up into shorter meetings because we're cutting into our citizens' time if we run to seven, seven thirty, eight o'clock. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
I second that. It's a good talk. And because I'm a new council, I did appreciate when we had the, you know, double-type meetings like that. And I think it'd be a good thing to consider maybe thinking about that again. As far as report, Robert asked me to look at... And these things are starting to come up, and they need to come up, council. He... Robert asked me to look at some of our permit fees scheduled. I did that. I sat down with Noah, and she went through this list of our standard permits with me. And she's very helpful and knowledgeable. She handles a tremendous lot of things like this, and she has the background to do it. But anyway, what... She marked up certain ones that she thought would be good for us to increase the rate, permit rates on. And it's not a lot, but it comes down to those that have to be inspected. Many times, a guy has to go back twice, even three times. So, the amount we're asking the resident to pay is inadequate. In some cases, even to pay for it. So, I marked those up. Robert, I'm going to give these to you, okay? He also attended the JBIC meeting on Saturday. It was a very good one and had a lot of good things that really impressed me. And they're moving forward with a lot of different things. I'm not going to go through them, you know, on the cattle log or anything. But the intent is good, and I was really pleased that they're... That it seems, and I hope, that we'll get closer together with the city and JBIC and begin to continue to work together on these projects. They have several things they're doing to clean up, different things. We're doing the same thing with our beautification group. But it was a very good meeting, and I got a lot out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the West Galveston Island Properties and Owners Association and talked with my friend and our Texas State Representative, Terry Leo Wilton. There were Texas marshals, sheriffs, constables. Gauz's chief of police was also there. It was a sea of officers. Most of you know that my passion is to share Stars for Truths with our first responders, and I gave out plenty that day. Jerry Mon, the chairman of Wiggy Poet, allowed me to share a brief statement about Stars for Truths, and I was able to talk to the entire group about our mission and was able to talk and ask for flags to be donated and dropped off at city hall. As always, it was well received. I was able to share lots of stars that day and met some very fine men in uniform. The video is on Facebook in my group, Jamaica Beach Reporters, and on YouTube. With what came up in the agenda for today, tonight, I wanted some more clarification about increasing our reserves from eighteen to thirty. So, I talked to Chief Garabee. Deborah Tabbert and I came over and have a wonderful educational chat with Garabee. Thank you so much for taking time to explain things with me. And he said that many of our questions could actually be answered with having a copy of the Jamaica Beach Police Department Standard of Operations. I asked for a copy of it. Chief Garabee explained for the mayor that the Department of Standard of Operations could be obtained with an open record request. So, tonight I will be giving Debbie another open... Another open record request. Thank you again, chief, for taking time to explain them to us. And thank you so much for your police reports. I'm so impressed. It gave us more information than we've had in many years. Also, as I do every year, I went to the Galveston courthouse and got voter registration cards. I left some with Debbie, and she'll have them here at city hall, and I'll have a few available with me. If you'd like to register to vote for the next city election, you'll need to do that before April 5th. We currently have seven hundred sixty-four registered voters in Jamaica Beach. Three seats are up for election. My seat, Gil's seat, and the mayor's seat. Last is Way West Grill. We'll have their pie in the face tomorrow. She's offering free food. She's going to feed us all on her day off. And that's tomorrow between four and six p.m. Thank you, man.
Thank y'all, guys. Next item is number eight, which is consent agenda and approval amendments. Approval amendments in a regular city council meeting from November twenty-first, 2022. Do I have a motion? Is there any... Just motion to discuss? Motion to discuss meetings from eleven twenty-one, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor? Except?
I'm going to abstain. I have not read them for... Directly.
Next item up for discussion is new business. Number one is discussion consideration. Take action to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash zero one, renewing the ordinance of 2018 dash six, which is a juvenile curfew for an additional three years. Basically, what we have to do is a lot of these ordinances, we have to come back and reinstate them or throw away with them every three years. This... Do I have a motion to open this up for discussion? Motion to discuss ordinance 2023 zero one, renewing ordinance 2018 dash six. I have a second. Second. Anyone have any discussion about that? Mr. Quintero, do you want to?
This is just to extend this, the current ordinance to expire January first, 2026. That's the only amendment to that.
Any discussions? This is the juvenile curfew. His name?
I do have... I came and talked to Chief Garabee today about this, and I think that you were in agreement. So, for one thing that's not included in this, I had the officers one time bring one of my children home. And believe me, it was only one time. But that's one thing that we need to include in this is that... To include parents. And this is my suggestion that we could maybe amend this and add the... To section D under enforcement. The chief of police is encouraged to develop alternative enforcement strategies, which may include, but are not limited to, officers calling parents, returning minors to their residence and parents, counseling with minors and parents, issuing citations, and/or warning to minors and parents. I think that's one thing that this is missing, is to include parent involvement.
Anyone else? Anybody have any discussion about what the chief... Her recommendation?
I believe that's under the chief's or PD's discretion as usual.
I do have the chief's support with this.
Chief, would you like to say something?
Yes, sir. Like I spoke to her today, I told her to get what she's putting. It's not going to hurt anything. But it is, like Alderman Rupertis said, it is a discretion. I told her that. We do that now. I mean, not everybody gets a curfew ticket. Not everybody goes to jail if they're seventeen. You can go to jail at seventeen. We make that discretion there, depending on what the situation is. We do that now. I mean, they know that. Any law enforcement officer knows that now. But again, I told her I have no problem with it. That would be for you guys to decide. But again, we do that now under discretion. But I think she got this from Galveston PD?
Yes.
It's in their ordinance. But again, we do that now. It's just not in writing.
Do you feel that's what needs to be written to...
I think that, again, it just adds to it. But again, we do that now. I mean, we get... And that's part of the teaching that we, you know, explained during training. When you stop someone, hey, a kid just happened a bad day. He got mad at his mom or grandmother or whatever, and takes off walking at one in the morning. Does he deserve a curfew ticket? Absolutely not. Let's take him back home, find out what's going on. They know that already. A kid's down there from Humble, Texas, he better explain to us why he's down there in our community from Humble, Texas at one in the morning. He's going to get a curfew ticket and maybe go to jail if he's seventeen. We already know that.
So, you think that by implementing something like that could take that discretion away?
Well, yeah. I didn't know if it could come back and...
I mean, it could. It could go either way. It could... Like I said, you can put it in if you want. That's for you guys to decide, but we're good. I mean, we understand that through training, what we're supposed to do. It's like a ticket for speeding. Do we write everybody a ticket for speeding? Absolutely not. I mean, it's discretion. The guys know it. It's a case-by-case basis, totality of the circumstances.
Chief, I like it because it's just going to reinforce what you're going to do.
Make the decision. Again, it does...
And simple, I mean. And it's the right thing to do.
I agree.
Alderman Jones, do we have the language that could be inserted into the... Into the ordinance? Do we have it?
This is... A copy of Galveston's, and I gave that to...
Mind if I pass it over? No, no problem. Anybody else? I just want to... Oh, yeah, see?
I got the gifts of...
Yes, of course. Of course.
I know if it was my kid, I'd appreciate a call.
Wouldn't they get that? They'd get that without being...
Kids reinforce it. It's the way it's going to be.
That's the way it always used to be down here when it was just a security guard. It'd take you home in a truck.
Well, the police are already actively doing that, so...
Well, this clarifies and helps citizens know that that is in the ordinance and that, you know, a warning or counseling is available for the family too.
Like I said, I don't have one problem with it, one way or the other. But...
Rather than...
I think most parents should already know that. I mean, really, shouldn't have to be told what to do. Showed what to do. But that being said, I do see the validity in it, but I think it's something we need to... I don't have a dog in the fight anymore.
Well, then...
My kids are all grown.
Well, there's grandbabies. Well, can I move to make a motion to amend the curfew or...
I can add that. I mean, like I said, that's part of our discussion. Do we... How would we do that? We would have a vote on adding the amendment? Or add a... Like I said, we have a vote. We would...
To approve it with this...
With the amendment.
Make the motion.
Yeah. To... With the amendment to approve with the amendment.
And I need to know exactly what it is. So, I mean, I... Yes, so, I mean, I, the.
It's all one of these things that might better.
Yes, you can.
Talk about it a little bit more to know exactly what we're gonna do before we know it.
You mean, get them, make sure the language?
Well, I don't know what, what you're amending it to say. Well, under section D. I understand that, I've got that. And just add it to, under that, that section.
Under the enforcement section?
Uh huh. You're talking about the chief of police encouraged to develop, is that what you're wanting to put in there? Yes. The red part, okay.
Or should we consider showing it that we get the correct language?
I believe this is a time-sensitive item?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's already expired, it was more like for city plus that.
Should we pass it as is and then come back at another time and amend?
He brings up, because what we're doing, not only this meeting, but the next two meetings, we have several more ordinances we are cleaning up, amending to, doing things like that. We make, make a deal that we would come back and revisit it.
You'll make me a deal that it will be on the agenda?
Yeah, we'll, we'll redisess it.
Well, that, that word encourage doesn't really say you have to or does that to.
Well, that's the whole thing about discretion, yeah.
Well, that's why I say I found this on the Galveston's city website under their ordinance. So it's the same wording as Galveston PD's. So that's a deal that we would be bringing it up?
I don't have one problem at all. One problem.
And it would get to add it to the agenda?
We can even do it next month, after we visit it.
Okay, next month.
This is time-sensitive, we have to get this approved.
Yeah, that's why we're, this is in rush right now, it's just getting it, the three years.
It's not expired.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's expired like last summer?
Yeah, well, that's why it's time-sensitive, these are the cleanups, we're trying to get.
It's January one.
Yeah.
January, January, January one of this year.
I see, okay.
At this point?
Okay, so that's a, that's a deal.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, I promise you. So all in favor, as it reads, discussion, consideration, take action to approve the ordinance, number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, renewing the ordinance of twenty eighteen dash six, which is a juvenile curfew. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? And please put that on the agenda. Next item is discussion and consideration and take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero two, ordering the May sixth, twenty twenty-three general election. Ms. Nesbit?
Basically, we have to order the election to, with Galveston County to go ahead and set it up for the May sixth election. So basically, it's just.
We have a motion to discuss?
I'll have the motion to discuss.
Second.
And I have no discussion.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, number three, discussion, consideration, and take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero three, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero five, establishment of a reserve police force for the city of Jamaica Beach.
Mayor and council.
Uh, we have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Which one? He banged it up today.
Yeah, you get it, okay.
Okay, Chief Garabee, you have something?
Yeah, Mayor and council, the only thing I'm bringing before you is currently, the ordinance reads that I'm only allowed to have eighteen reserves. I can name three agencies right now that have thirty. I'm asking that you remove it up to thirty, not that we will have thirty, but don't limit me to thirteen, to eighteen. When someone wants to come do free work and put their life on the line with the citizens of Jamaica Beach, why should we limit it at eighteen? The only cost there is is a uniform and a badge and an ID, which comes out to about two fifty, three hundred dollars. So, with that being said, again, here recently, we had eighteen. I had some people that came, tried to get on, said, sorry, ordinance is eighteen, we follow the rules. And then, two weeks later, I had three guys that left, three gals that left. And with that being said, those three that I tried to call back already gone on to another agency. So, all this is, is basically giving me a little bit more room to hire up to thirty reserve officers, which we utilize, you know, here in this community during the peak season of the summer.
Well.
I have a question. When did we ever limit it at eighteen?
We did a long, we did a while.
Was that when Andy was chief?
Well, because it got to be.
Twenty twenty-one was the ordinance.
Right.
May of twenty twenty-one.
I think we were doing that, we re, redid it for some other reason, but before that, we cut it down because there were so many people, so many officers coming in, and there were a couple that were on the rolls that never came. They were keeping their tea-clothes hours, and when they did come, they didn't know, you know, it's kind of, you kind of like to know your police officer, you know, and I, I get to know them because I go up and talk to them. A lot of people don't, and a lot of people are scared to, but I've never been afraid to go up and talk to the police. But, you know, it's just, that's the reason we quit it the last time, was because it was being, I think, misused a little bit.
I assure you, we're getting each one who's putting in their.
Yeah, Chief Garabee and I have had several meetings, long meetings about this, about increasing the training, and getting some quality people here in the city, and having an FTO where they are trained out, and get to know some of our local ordinances. And then the other thing is, we're gonna be increasing these patrols come the peak seasons. We're really looking at getting.
Jamaica Beach is kind of a unique place, we're small, and it sure is nice to know all your police officers.
Right. Well, and also, that's another discussion, anyone that I bring in, you, I, I give them my word, they're gonna be sworn in in front of you guys, so you can hear them that night. So, again, we're gonna get every free dollar we can out of each one, there's no on the list just to be on the list.
Ain't nothing free.
Ain't nothing free. You're gonna be reserved, you're gonna come put in your hours.
Well, and that's, the other thing we, Chief and I agreed upon was, they have to be here so many, they have to put in so many hours now. Yeah, which there hadn't been before, and we made sure that it's happening now.
We have, we have a reserve on duty right now, as a matter of fact, we're getting FTO in tonight.
So the minimum they have to work per month is sixteen hours?
That's correct, ma'am. The second part of it is, it has in the ordinance where it says the reserves will be hired and approved by the police chief and the city administrator. I don't know where that came from, but that's my job. I hire and I fire, and I don't need a city administrator telling me who to hire and who not to hire. I know law enforcement, that's what I do thirty-one years, I'm pretty good, you know, seeing backgrounds and knowing who fits our family in Jamaica Beach. So, I'd ask that you change that as well, where it gives the chief of police the full authority to hire a full-time and reserve officers.
Does that change already, Mr. Mayor?
The last rule is that city.
Yeah, we, we just need to strike that out.
Several of them we have to do.
Right. And. And like I said, I completely agree with you.
Everyone.
Yeah, it'll be us, Woody, that will, would strike that on our vote.
Hasn't my guard been updated? Has it been updated?
Yes, it's already been pulled.
You see, the ordinance I was giving, had city administrator on there, I don't know which one. So it hasn't really been stretched.
Guard, what's in front of us, yes, sir?
Yes, and what's in front of us, so we're accepting it's what's in front of us, yeah, which is having the chief on the bar, yes.
You have any questions for me?
Um, one thing that we talked about today was just to clarify section four, where police force may carry a duty weapon and include duty weapon in that sentence.
When she brought that to my attention, there's something wrong, it doesn't read that, it says the reserve officer may carry, and then it goes on to something. I think someone forgot to put an off-duty weapon, on-duty weapon, duty weapon, it doesn't say what to carry. It just says to carry, I think it's some kind of old mistake. We need to somehow fix that as well. It was a valid point to where it says, and she's got the paperwork, Honorable woman Jones has it, where it forgets to include what they're carrying.
This here says upon chief's approval.
But this is the corrected one.
Unless, officer, unless has been approved by the chief of police, so that gives you oversight over that.
Once ironed, yes, sir.
So this has been adjusted as well.
Again, whatever she showed me today, it was missing, maybe you got the old one?
It's on the, it's on the current item that's on the agenda right now, under section four.
Can you read this so you can clarify for this section four?
No person appointed to the reserve police force may carry, and I think that's what she's saying, a weapon or otherwise act as a peace officer unless he has been approved by the chief of police. But the question is, may carry.
I'd like to say something, it's a, it's a state, we don't give permission for an officer to carry or not to carry. They carry all the time at their choice. We don't get involved in that, and I, I thought the whole sentence should be straightened, because we don't control that. We don't control that.
Being a peace officer, I told her that, that it has to be done, when you're a peace officer, you're required to carry.
And reserve chief for clarification?
Same thing.
Yeah, same thing, you're still.
On duty, you're required to carry.
So if we were to move?
Sounds like another candidate for the next meeting, getting straightened out and.
Is this time-sensitive?
Yes, it is, ma'am, sir.
Well, we just need to scratch line item four on this one. Can we just scratch line item four and move ahead?
Why do you want to remove it?
Because they, as they just stated, it's incorrect.
Yeah, like the mayor, it is technically covered by state law.
Yeah, we, it's, it's overruled by us, yeah.
State law says you must carry, it gives them the authorization as a peace officer, once they employ by a police department, to carry their weapon.
Sure, then we need to take that out of the ordinance.
So just take, strike.
Bring it back next month and we approve.
No, no, we don't have to, we can approve it without striking it.
Or you can table it, whichever you want, sir.
We could just approve and strike section four, or.
You wanna take out minimum training requirements? Sorry.
It's in section five.
Yeah, right, we're five pairs of covered.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, section five.
Okay. So you can strike this off as section four?
Yeah, just strike out all section five.
Section four.
I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, I want my officers trained.
Somebody start us a pot of coffee, we're running out of.
Section four talks about the trainers, section five speaks about. Section four trainers talks, talks about carrying.
Are you looking at the same one?
That's what I'm saying, guys.
So you're saying that section four shouldn't have even been put in there in the first place?
You can, you can remove it.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
It's covered by state law, or you can simply just leave it just the way it is.
Oh, yeah.
And just go back to what we were, it, it was just, the, the language said to carry, the only thing we're, you can either remove it or leave it, and we can move forward.
Because we're, we're overruled anyway.
State law still says you must carry.
Supersedes it.
Yeah.
Supersedes it.
Just the way it is. And just change reserves from eighteen to thirty, that's what I read.
But that's kind of the whole idea, is we're trying to clean these ordinances up.
Yeah, so that may create confusion.
Let's just take it out, yeah. So all in favor of approving ordinance number two?
We have a motion, we're amending it.
Yeah.
I mean, look at it, we're talking, we're sort of here, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three, striking section four.
I'll second that motion.
Ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, making progress.
Discussion, consideration, and take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, supporting the abolition of the county treasurer in Galveston. Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion, consideration, and take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero four, amending ordinance twenty nineteen dash eight to adopt the twenty twenty national electoral, electoral code. I have a motion to discuss?
I have a motion, we discuss that.
Okay.
It was brought to our attention by a city inspector that this, this needs to be done because we're under, under the old code of twenty nineteen.
Just House people.
Yes.
And what we have in here is the corrected one.
Yes.
Just making sure we have the same page. Any discussion?
I know, I'll make a move, we vote on this and approve.
I do have a question, sir. This far down, this one sentence says, whereas within said code, when reference is made to the duties of a certain official named therein. What does that mean by a certain official named within? So is there a certain official who is named?
It would be the inspector.
It would be the inspector.
Inspectors, yeah, that would be considered, yeah.
And.
Because they can't name all the inspectors, so that's what they're, they're.
For the inspector at the time, it's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Number five? Discussion, consideration, and take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, supporting the abolition?
Oh, abolition.
Abolition? I said, I think there's a typo there. Of the, of the county treasurer in Galveston.
That actually came to me from.
Copy please.
That came from me from the.
Motion to discuss supporting the abolition of the county treasurer in Galveston.
I did top that, thank you.
So, I have a point, I want a point of order here, we can't have two ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero ones on our books.
No, this is a resolution, it's not an ordinance.
Resolution.
Yes, it's a resolution.
Did I?
They're different.
The first one of this year, for crying out loud. The very first one of this year.
Does anybody have any questions on that? I mean, like I said, we've got reinforcements here that answer questions.
So, we're, never mind, it's, it's a redundant question.
Okay, were we ready to vote? All in favor?
Well, we're gonna have.
He already spoke, it was only your first question, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
David made the motions, I missed it. David made the motion, two second.
Thank you, gentlemen, sorry to keep you, appreciate you.
Thank you for coming out, nice to see you.
Number six, discussion and possible action to approve a replat of lot eight, block nine, and block eleven, block nine in section twenty-five, a subdivision commonly known as one six five zero seven Prince of Drake and one six five zero six Mansville Road, Jamaica Beach, Texas. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I have a motion to discuss that.
Second?
Second.
I'll third.
Yes. Motion, which one you decided to take? Yeah, I'll give it here.
Is there, do, I mean, is there any, is there any questions, it's all pretty much straightforward?
Before the minutes of the meeting, because that was a special public hearing, we wanted to report it in minutes.
Okay.
I request to consider a replat of what's given to the city of Jamaica Beach zoning and planning commission. A replat of the aforementioned properties that's on your paper is applied to one property known as one six five oh six Mansville Road, Jamaica Beach, Texas. All, all the application was published, the Galveston County Daily News, an official newspaper with a general circulation. Notes were sent to the property owners within the two hundred, two hundred feet of the subject property. Fifteen, fifteen notices were mailed to the property owners within the. Uh, fifteen cop, fifteen notices were mailed, uh, to the property owners within the two hundred feet of the property. Uh, the staff recommends that you accept this.
Pretty planning and zoning also.
Oh, yeah, they, it was unanimously approved by the planning and zoning commission.
Thank you. Any discussions? Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discussion and possible action to approve John D Mercer and Associates authority to post the notice to bidders for the twenty twenty-three waterline improvement project. Motion to discuss?
Or press.
Second, thank you. Any discussion?
You do it.
Ready to vote? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, discussion and possible action to approve the director of operations and mayor to negotiate a contract for water in wastewater operations. Motion to discuss?
Or press.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Pardon me, pardon me. Okay. You'll be negotiating a contract for water wastewater operation, so this has to do with the water plant and operations at the water plant?
That's the wastewater site.
Okay. On June twenties, uh, June sixth, uh, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, an RFP was evaluated for RFP twenty twenty-two dash zero one WWT. There was two respondents to the advertised RFP, the evaluation. Staff members and the city engineer reviewed and tabulated the RFP grading and score criteria set in out in the RFP. After deep deliberation, it was determined that Branch Construction is the best company to administer the wastewater treatment operations for the wastewater services and other water services for the city of Jamaica Beach. While no formal agreement shall be executed without the ratification by the Jamaica City, uh, Jamaica Beach City Council. Mayor Morrison staff request the authorization of the city council to negotiate with Branch Construction. The contracts content and forward the contract to the city attorney for filed draft and then city council approval.
That's what we're talking about, easy thing.
Yeah, that's not in the package.
The RFP?
Yeah, that's what you just said.
All ready?
We're not voting on that.
They're not voting, we're just trying to negotiate a price.
And then they request a proposal, right?
Correct.
And then we bring that proposal back to council.
Right. We we published it, uh, in the newspaper, we publish it everywhere we're supposed to.
The contract is out with USW.
Yeah, we're.
The contract is out.
We're running month to month with USW right now.
So we've requested this proposal.
Correct.
From, in a in an open RFP.
Correct.
Can I get, when when these kind of things come up, I I, you know, can I can I have the option to come to these meetings where these decisions are are decided? I'm I'm feeling very, um.
Yeah, the contract's written out, we had to go out for a new contract, there's. And we went out for those contracts and received bids. There's no decisions decided until the RFPs are reviewed.
Correct.
But this is, this is homework, this is standard operating procedure.
Yeah.
I saw in the minutes, in our minutes that we just, we just approved in the last November, December. Were you going to to, um, issue that RFP? But I was under the the thought process that we in council would see that before it was issued.
The RFP?
Yes.
Why would we?
That's just standard operations. Yeah, this is.
Which I paid me to do.
Daily operations.
I mean, I honestly, uh.
And I'm sorry, did council vote on going out for RFPs?
It's not just a matter of inform.
Yeah, I was saying, yeah.
We already voted in November. Not a voting, it's a courtesy.
Hold on, trying to back up. Council already advised staff to go out for RFPs.
Okay, this was decided in November then.
So this is something council already asked for, and this is phase two.
Yeah, we asked for that. He said he was gonna prepare it.
He did.
Right, in in the meeting minutes. And I was expecting just basically as a courtesy, that we would see what what it was. That's all.
See, see what what was.
The the contents of the request were proposed.
You read it.
That's all.
Yeah, it's prepared, yeah, by the engineers.
Yeah.
You want to read it?
We don't know what's in there until.
They're usually quite.
Yeah.
And we're trying to eliminate you from doing, I mean, we can always.
That's all.
Yeah, I understand that, but it makes it a lot simpler for you. There's nothing to vote on.
But to further this discussion, but to further this discussion to council, I am not comfortable, okay? With, the issue I have is always people, okay? And in this case, it's the actual person that operates the waste treatment plant, okay? What we have down there, his name is Lester, it is a guy that really understands our waste treatment plant. He's been operating it faithfully for a year or so. Okay, he also operates the Texas A and M facility on Pelican Island, that wastewater treatment plant. We're not comfortable with guys and Lorraine, is that, is that I'm more concerned about losing the guy. He's dependable, he does a great job. It's always, our plant is not automated. It's a good plant, it works well. It is not automated. This guy has learned it, he runs it well.
And we had somebody before him that ran it well too, and then, you know.
Somebody before him.
But that's it, that's my only, my only concern. My concern is not losing a good operator.
We're not looking at getting rid of him by any means.
Yeah, you know what I mean. Now, if we have problems about, if staff has problems with with a contractor doing other work on the wastewater treatment land or or wastewater treatment systems, good, I mean, that's reasonable. I mean, staff should have a choice of contractors. I mean, if if we have an emergency, one can't do it, you call the other one, right? That part I'm okay with, but I I am concerned about losing a good operator.
What what we're talking about is the contract.
Those those guys are licensed.
Negotiating.
Yes.
Anyone we hire would have to be.
I realize that, but and he also, he's respected by the people in inspecting it. I've been down there working with the guy. I've been down there when inspectors came in, I know that they respect that guy. That's all, thank you.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain.
So passes, number eight passes. Number nine, discussion, no action will be taken on no parking on Bob Smith. You heard, uh, citizen, uh, Kland Fuller, and, uh, I mean, what type of discussion was that by ideas to Ohio? So we can see about, since we're doing, I guess, no, because there's no action to be taken, yeah, sorry, man. Yeah, no. Thank you though for allowing me, um, which else, which else thoughts?
First of all, I I don't know, it's kind of a sticky wicket, because we're not responsible for that fence. We're not responsible for the marshland on the other side of that fence. I mean, I empathize with with the request, because it is. It's not right, but, um, I I just don't think that it's not. It's not fixable by this city, but it's, I don't think a no parking sign is gonna fix it either. Um, I might be wrong, I would.
Well, I think the challenge we're gonna have is, I've talked to some of the other residents there that face west, and they didn't want, they want to be able to use that area for parking temporarily as they need to.
I understand, you know, Montego and Kingston and some of those other streets that are pretty small, but you get up there to, you know, Pelican, Flamingo, Curlew, Sandpiper, those streets are fairly wide.
Just make sure that you're, that's not the area I'm talking about, it's way past that area, so.
Yeah, I I know you're talking about Pelican and up, and I'm just trying to give the Pelican. Sorry.
And there's already two no parking, uh, signs at the back, the city has put on box and.
And the question is really not about the fence. Hang on, guys, we can't, this is, we we gotta. We're probably gonna open this up to a workshop so we can all discuss, yeah.
So everybody can talk?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so let's put this on the next workshop, please. Is everybody okay with it?
I'd take one.
Okay. Uh, number ten, again, um, discussion, no action will be taken, uh, on the possibility of raising water rates. I have something to add to that is, you know, when we talk about that, we've got, we have a serious problem with infrastructure in our city. And I've talked to many citizens that are like, I want it done sooner than three years, or five years, or seven years. Because everything, you know, we have a very small budget, and we're talking about very expensive items that need to be done. You know, without passing a bond or or trying to speed this along, how do you get that money? Well, you know, and like I said, just for simple math and simple, uh, what if? Let's say we put, we just raise the price on water, the whole thing, twenty-five dollars. Or suppose we said, some, uh, maybe we have a trash increase, maybe we have a drainage fee. You know, we can, we can, we can make it up, whatever we want to do. But let's say we just do twenty-five dollars every month for every every home here. That's about three hundred sixty thousand dollars a year. That's barely a drop in the bucket for what we're needing done here. Cause we're needing millions done. You know, we don't, we, you know, we want, we don't wanna, we we don't want to have to raise our property taxes, uh, you know, at some point we're gonna have to, but we don't want to have to do a big jump. You know, so we have to try to do this where it's manageable. And if you if you start having that savings account and put some money away for some of these items, it can, it can make it a little better, and we can, we can move move some of our timelines up a little bit, which I would be in favor of. Even if we did, we could say, hey, let's do a a temporary increase for three years or whatever, just till we get enough money to do something. We can earmark that money, we can, we can do a lot of things. But what we know, what we're doing is not working. I mean, you know, it it it's working, but it's not working to the best of its ability. And that's what we try to do, is, uh, Russell and I spend a lot of time with these infrastructure projects. We're happy to do it. But our hands get tied, uh, with these contractors as as far as, um, you know, giving them the green light on a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. You know, it 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 makes it tough. Yes, we have to bid all those out. Our our ordinance is say, uh, fifteen thousand or sixteen thousand, we have anything over that needs to be bid out. But I I, that's just what I want to say. I want to speak on that real quick, but I'll leave this up to, uh, Russell and and.
May, may, you mind?
I'm pleased.
Okay, and you were right, we're all in the same area as far as water rates are concerned, it's pretty much average. But mayor, you are, we are putting Band-Aids on top of Band-Aids on top of Band-Aids over here. Now, a temporary, nothing's ever gonna be temporary, okay? You've heard of temporary taxes that never go away, but, uh, possibly the water rate's being changed, and I, as I look, there's other things, uh, at other surrounding cities that we could probably go up on. Our garbage rate is way lower than mo- most places, okay? Just way lower. It was funny, I mean, the the city of Galveston, I noticed, I just looked at, finally, I looked, just looked through my water bill, and they have a seven dollar drainage fee. I know what I can do with seven dollars drainage here. We can clean out the ditches and get rid of some mosquitoes, okay? But that's that's not away from the water. We need to do something serious about this, because we have paper-thin pipes around here. And by the time we get to the different phases, uh, you know, it's it's, we're gonna have a, it's a recipe for disaster if we don't do something fast.
Right, but please understand, see that dollar or the dollar amount that Galveston's charging? We have to buy our water from Galveston.
Yes.
So understand that, you know, we are losing money there. So that that's, that's a negative to us every month, and we have to, we have to use other monies to help make up for that. And and we're not in a position, we we need to get as much capital as we can to do these extra jobs and projects that we're we're so far behind on.
I would be, I would consider like a water rate, but I would, something like water project fee.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
I have a question for for people who know more about this than me. And that is, okay, what does seven sixty K or yet, how much faster does, cause how much faster does that happen if we get that? That's that's, I guess, the question I want to ask to Robert and and.
Yeah, what was phase four? How much was phase four? You don't remember? Seven, seven sixty?
No, no, it was in the, the middle of threes.
I was gonna say like almost four hundred thousand or, no, three hundred eighty thousand.
There was more than seven hundred seventy thousand.
Okay, so not quite answering my question. My question has, how much can we crunch the timeline?
Okay, so, so, so if we do one year, so if we do this in one year, we could be able to do two phases next year.
Right, versus one.
Versus one, correct.
So how many phases do we have left?
Gosh.
Oh my goodness, so five, six, seven?
No.
Ten?
Ten.
Three.
Two.
Can I speak now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have depleted our reserves and even cashed in a, uh, a certificate of deposits to get the last three done. We can't cash in any more reserves, we can't cash any more certificate of deposits. We have to keep those reserves for a national disaster fund. We're out of monies. The city did great saving all that money for these projects, but what the city didn't come to terms with is all of our infrastructure regarding our water supply has reached its shelf life. It's not, if it's gonna fail, it's when it's gonna fail. We have replaced not even one, I don't know, just over a sixth of our current water lines. We have a long, long ways to go. With this raise of rates, we'll be able to afford one, maybe one and a little bit change left over. That's for fiscal year. That's not gonna be enough, that's just getting us started, alright? But we cannot, we're a critical mass. We are spending more in repairs monthly than we are spending on purchasing our water, our sewage water wastewater operations, our our fees, our repair bill is killing us right now. I had a check come across the other day from the past thirty, forty-five days for over sixty thousand dollars in repairs. In hindsight, we should have gotten started on this ten years ago, but who knew that everything was gonna give out at once? Robert commented that our pipes are paper thin. Guys, please remember, this water infrastructure was installed in the late sixties, early seventies. It was simply not meant to last this long. Okay, even fifties. There's also valves, we're behind the times on this. We have, this, I think, should be councils, the cities, the staffs. Number one on their list, top priority, and this this water rate raise is just just getting started on. So, so thinking creatively, I mean, it's it's a matter of funding, right?
Yes.
Correct. And how good of relationships do we have with Senator Middleton and, uh, congressperson? And how good of relationships do we have with Senator Middleton and, uh, congressperson Wilson?
Really good.
Can we put some pressure or some, because this was, this came up at H gag, that we can use some hot for this. Cause you know, we're drowning in hot money and we can't spend it, and we're not, that's a misconception, but.
It's gonna go away, I mean, every, every time that we need something, like I will go. It's gone away.
Get us over, just trying to get us over the hump here. We, we exceed or, or we don't exceed, but we spend the majority of our hat, hot taxes annually. There, there's not a lot left over, that's a common misconception here.
So, back to these repairs.
Can, can I touch base on one more?
No, I wanted, yeah.
There, there is, you're, you're, you're headed in the right direction, that's great. Instead of going to, to Mays, I think we should go towards granting solutions, go to Grant Works. I also think we should approach the county. But this takes time, and right now, the day-to-day operations on running. Our water emergency takes up damn near his full-time job. And thirty percent of the time, I don't have anymore, I'm still getting calls at nine, ten o'clock at night from stepping in and helping out. So I'm, I'm up for any help, any ideas.
I'm just trying to spit, because we need money, obviously, and we need, we need more than, we need more than we can comfortably raise from our citizens. Right.
I don't wanna take away from this, this is, this is a doable step one.
That's doable, I mean, it helps, but if, if we look at the bigger picture, it doesn't.
It doesn't get the ball barreled down the field.
Well, this isn't our only issue, the sewer plant is in critical situation.
It's working, it needs to be repaired, there's some repairs to be made, we're not running that full capacity, we're, we have passed inspections, so.
Yeah. And we're not able to get that into this year's budget.
I, uh, somebody brought up, I believe a citizen brought up that we just recently raised our water rates? I don't recall a water rate raise, does anybody have the information on the last time we did? I've been paying a water bill for twenty years down here, I don't recall the last one.
We had, I can't say.
I remember, I remember there was a meeting where the. Garbage or sewer rate went down and we raised, took that dollar and put it over here, so it raised it, so it kind of balanced each other out.
So we moved a dollar around.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Don't remember a break, I guess.
No. We're, 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 we're operating like we did ten years ago, we're operating with the same staff and the same budget. And we're not keeping up to the times.
Tell me about the sixty thousand dollars you spent fixing things.
Emergency repairs, non-stop rates.
But we write work orders for those.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
If you can remember, let's get a total of our water, total water replacement for next meeting. Just so we can have, yeah, for all of them.
Please excuse me, I ran down the rabbit, rabbit hole, but.
Yeah.
This has put a lot of pressure on myself, Robert, and staff lately, and I really, I wanna move forward in the right direction. I don't wanna wait for the next break, I wanna get ahead of it.
Well, here's the thing, uh, guys, common sense, as I said. I, I really think David's got the point, is that the big picture is that we look at grants, getting help, and spending the hot money. I know everybody always says no, and we say this, but that's legitimate, that's a good thought process.
Okay, let me just give my expertise on the grant area.
Excuse me?
Give you the expertise that I have in grant areas, we're not a rural area, cause I've looked at that area as well. Number two, the base income, minimum, median family income.
We don't like it, I'm with that myself.
So then you have to look for overlap and use of, of doing this.
At least we look.
Well, I have. I have, that's what I do. And we don't fit, the income in here is too high to, to, to be able to apply for these, those lines.
Infrastructure for.
Correct.
Okay, so grants off the table?
Pretty much.
I.
I will continue to look, but from what I, you know, I, I've gone through the rural, I've really gone through, through, uh, emergency water, I, yeah, I've done it all.
Well, again, I think David's point about going up. To Harry Wilson and to the right people, and see what they might say is a good idea.
All right.
But also, we need to fix the leaks we have, we've wasted water.
We're doing it every day.
I know, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, but just think about it, it's not criticism. Okay?
Yes.
It's not that, it's just we need, we need to concentrate on, we've gotta fix the leaks so we're not wasting water. Because we have to pay for it and we don't use it.
I'd much rather spend the money on repairing and replacing lines than fixing lines.
Yeah.
I would too, Russell, but still, we have to stop, you know, wasting water and paying for it. And we're moving to phase four, that's what we're bidding out. One of the things that I haven't heard is debate in, in, Lorraine brought it up, it's a waste treatment plant. Is the, the, the basite lift station, we put a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in our budget. Rob and I met in August, down there with Marcyer.
We have not received the engineer report yet, and well, yeah.
So I was hoping to see, because here's what I'm thinking. From my experience, my knowledge, we're running those pumps on a low head. And those pumps don't do well if they run forever on, without a full head. So, so sooner or later, we'll have problems that replace the pumps. Or we'll have a failure out there on that lifting, so I was hoping to see that our engineers were.
And that's what.
Moving forward on that, so we could bid that out and get it fixed.
We're waiting on that, uh, engineering right now.
Yeah. So I see where we're gonna bid out the water lines, we need to do that too, of course, and the schedule looks good, we wanna do it in March, we don't wanna do it now. Went through that, what was her name?
All that we're working on.
And we buried a contractor in the mud.
Okay, uh, at least everyone's aware now of some of the issues. Other than that, mayor's report number ten, um. You know, we've hired a, uh. A, a building. Uh, I'm sorry, a code enforcement officer now, uh, which is really helping us out. We're working with Tiki Island to see about getting a building inspector and splitting it with them, full-time building inspector. So we're not having to sub that out, and we just share that, since we're not big enough for, uh. For a full-time with us, just us, we would share fifty-fifty with them. Uh, beautification, y'all are doing great work, I mean, it's looking great, yeah. We're, you know, I've instructed the staff, um, and department heads that, hey, let's get updating our ordinances, let's get updating. Maybe what do we need to do, uh, let's, let's, uh, check on our, uh, building permit rates. Uh, we, I've already went through with the police department and the judge, we've adjusted a lot of our ticket rates and, and, uh. That's been very beneficial, uh, so just getting us all up, up to the times. The road striping, we're still working on, we've got several areas, we're working on redoing striping, adding in, um. You know, like the pedestrian over here, we're just waiting for the template to be made. Uh, we've had that on since we started the plan over there. I'll be doing a state of the city, uh, next month, uh, during council meeting, during the, um, business side. I'll be doing a state of the city meeting. Other than that, uh, have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.